It is Tuesday, August nineteenth at five oh two P M. Before we get started, just a quick mayor's note to the council about meeting process. Just wanted to give a friendly reminder to everyone about meeting decorum and Robert's rules. As a presiding officer of our meetings, please wait to be recognized by me before speaking. I've gotten a lot of feedback from the public recently that when some of them are watching our meetings, like on YouTube or online after, if they don't know personally or individually who each of us are, they are having difficulty understanding who is talking or making what comments. So just to be crystal clear for everybody that's watching in the spirit of transparency and openness to the public, that would be great. And then also just a friendly reminder that any discussion from the council cannot take place until after we have a motion and a second on the table to specifically talk about that item, whatever it may be. So with that, given the number of guests we have in attendance at this evening's meeting, including those who have driven several hours from the Twin Cities and elsewhere to be here, I thought it would be good if we could actually start with C, planning and zoning, ordinances, enforcement, consultant, and additional changes in direction, and then move to interim administrator, and then twenty twenty six budget discussion. Are there any objections or is council okay with that shift? Just to be respectful of people's time that are in the audience that may have come specifically for the planning and zoning items.
So you want a motion put forward on that?
We don't need a motion unless there's an objection. Okay, seeing none, we will start with planning and zoning. So what I had, just for my notes, is it appears that we've had some process issues and planning and zoning that perhaps aren't working the most optimally for the city. And I think it would be good if we kind of paused and took a timeout and assessed things in that regard. And so I'm going to start by making a motion, and then what I'd like to do is call some folks from the audience to the mic and then open it up for council discussion. So my motion is related to one of our area's businesses, Grandview. And my motion is to suspend the administrative citation violation that was issued to Grandview Lodge and any other businesses that may have received similar violations, and to suspend action on those administrative citation violations until our December council meeting. Therefore, due to the suspension of the administration citation violation, there shall be no restrictions placed on these entities, and they shall have no impact on these businesses obtaining building permits or other requests from the city. So with that, I see that we do have the Grandview folks here. I thought I saw the CEO of Coat Family, Ignelo, come in. I thought I saw Dawn and Lonnie. If any of you would like to approach the microphone and make comments to council, that would be greatly appreciated.
Certainly. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Dawn Southworth. I'm the managing director of Grandview. We were given a citation violation for the public access that is located at the end of Woodward Avenue. That is an area that is utilized to get to the lake, usually in the winter, because it is a sanded area. It's not really safe for trailers or vehicles. So we were approached early spring by Steve about residents upset with us having a shed there to do our activities out of. So that's paddleboard, kayaking, and so forth. So he came down and walked the area with Lonnie, our director of facilities, and our assistant general manager, Jessica Jacobson. And they kind of came to an agreement, let's put the shed here until we can figure out, because there has been surveys completed and just understanding what is truly Grandview's and the public access. And so this dates all the way back to nineteen sixteen, and there was another situation in nineteen forty-three. So there's a history to all of this. And so we had gone to Witseth to actually review the surveys, and the city actually did that with us. So there were two parties going to Witseth on the situation. We went ahead and followed what we had discussed. Then there was further discussion about the local, there were some residents that were upset about the situation. And we had talked possibly, do we get a seasonal permit to have the shed down there? What do we do? So we hadn't come to a conclusion, and we weren't given a conclusion to help face the obstacles. During, when season hit pretty hard in June, we noticed that there was a heavy traffic area. And so we have a shuttle, we have emergency vehicles that need to get there, and we have a lot of pedestrians. So we actually had called Niswa P D on several occasions because cars were parking in places that did not allow for traffic to flow, and they were kind of no parking areas. So instead of calling Niswa P D and utilizing them for that type of situation, we did put a couple of barriers up. They weigh probably about ten pounds, maybe fifteen. They can be moved and shifted. That's kind of what we use when we have events and so forth. That can just be quickly moved. So that if someone wanted to put their paddleboard in or their kayak from their vehicle, they could back up, we could shift it, we have staff there. But it definitely allowed for us to not have this huge traffic or parking of vehicles that we don't know who they are, where, when they're coming back. Our director of facilities, Lonnie, went in to do an over-the-counter permit because we wanted to put a shed for the season. We have wedding season coming up, and we wanted a place to store the white chairs that we have so that we weren't going back and forth. What is usually a very easy over-the-counter permit. He came in to meet with Steve and get the signature. They shared, he was approached by three individuals in the meeting room and told that everything was good to go, but that they would not sign it because the situation at the waterfront access had not been taken care of, meaning that the shed had not been removed along with the other small building and the barricades. And so we didn't feel that great about the situation, and it really put Lonnie in a bad position. He's been with Grandview for thirty years and has worked closely with the city through his career. So it was a situation that he has never really been put through. In my eyes, it was a bit unfair. But, so he came back, and then he received a call stating that the city would be giving us a violation or citation to remove the shed within fifteen days, if I'm correct, or else there would be a penalty fee. We know that there's an opportunity that we all need to work through with the water access. It is greatly used in the winter, and we take care of that access all winter long. We don't ask the city to come in and, you know, make sure the ice heave isn't too high or that people can't get in there safely to Goll Lake. We take it upon ourselves to take care of that because we know it's an important access for everyone, not just locals, but our guests as well. So, but in the summer, as I shared, it's always kind of been an area where we place our paddleboards and so forth. We just placed the shed there so we could have a computer and be able to service our guests a little bit better and store our equipment. The concerning part is, is that because of this opportunity that we all know that has gray areas, that is going to take more than a discussion, to be held back from any further permitting at Grandview really kind of cuffs us, handcuffs us to make any improvements. And I don't know if everybody realizes, but just this year alone, we're going to have close to two hundred and fifty thousand guests come through our resort. And that's something that, you know, has, many of our guests have become residents here in Niswa because of their experiences and what this town has become. So it's just, it's super concerning why you would handcuff someone or a business that is doing this, not only for the city. Many of our guests are downtown, spend money throughout the city and the areas, not just at Grandview. So we're just asking, can this be reviewed and can we evaluate this to hopefully come to a conclusion that it works best for the city and for us and for the public and residents?
Thank you. And I realized, I don't know if I got a second before Dawn started speaking. I apologize.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Now I'd like to open it up for council discussion or questions. Council member Hall, we can start with you.
Yeah, I guess I'm familiar with the area, you know. Switching, I know we have fire chief in the room, to the barricades and that access point down there. For many people that maybe don't know, is that is primary access for the fire department to get down to the lake to protect that whole neighborhood, East London, West London, Grandview. You know, having the barricades there isn't anything new. I've been on the department for twenty-two years now. They've always been there as long as I can remember. Like I say, maybe our chief can talk to it, too. It's a lot easier to throw a little barricade out of the way or move something than move a vehicle if we need to get down there and access water. You know, that's been talked about in our pre-planning when we go over with Grandview Resort and different people in the area. Even before this topic, just this last meeting at the fire department, we were talking about this. It's just one of many areas we have in town that's set up like this to draft water out of. And so I guess I just bring that to people's attention. It is important that there is something there that is portable to move for, you know, the emergency end of it. So that would be, I don't know if anybody wants to add, but that'd be my comment.
Thanks, council member Hall. Council members on?
What was the, Ms. Southworth, right? What was the last communication that you had with our planning, at least planning commission, or Stephen himself, or the city as a whole in regards to the potential infractions prior to the citation being issued? Was there warnings given, or at least was there an attempt to try to collaborate to find a solution before it was issued?
The, if I'm correct, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe that was with Lonnie. When he came in to request the over-the-counter permit is when I think he was told that he was going to be receiving a violation, and then he received a call, if I'm correct, August seventh. If, I'm not sure of the dates that it was being done and sent.
Okay.
We talked about, we talked about how we needed to work for a solution. But as I shared before, we were going with Witseth, too, because this is not a solution that I think we could all figure out. I mean, it took getting surveys. Both, I think, the city or Steve and us were having difficulty getting that information back. Lonnie and I actually went to visit Witseth a week and a half ago and literally just walked in because we weren't getting the responses. So that's when we sat down and got the information that we needed to get and which direction we needed to go from the public access perspective.
Understood. And another question is, how frequently would you say that that landing is used in the summertime by residents for various purposes where the barricades would have to be removed so they could access it?
We actually just had a resident, I believe it was Friday, pull his truck in and need to let his or get his paddleboard out. So the team just kind of shifted the barricade and let him back up. Since I've only been here now about a year and a half, I've not ever seen a trailer go in that route. Just, I don't know how you would do that with the sand. I would feel like it would kind of sink in, and it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to kind of back the vehicle with the trailer into the water without the trailer sinking into the sand.
You're spot on, and then they would be asking for Grandview to get their equipment to help pull them out. In the winter months, Grandview Lodge is maintaining that access.
Yeah, we have.
And is Grandview Lodge also taking assumption of the, of the plowing, the ice heaves, the, the flow of traffic, everything?
We do not do the plowing on the lake, but we do, we did have to break down the ice heaves and so forth. I've only spent one winter here so far. But I know that our grounds team did make sure that it was a safe entranceway into the lake because we had quite a bit of ice heaves that came up. But they kept that down and maintained it for a safe getting put onto the ice.
And if my mind does not beseech me, I do believe that the Niswa Fire Department, especially during events such as the J C's Ice Fishing Extravaganza, will utilize that landing as a, as a access, kind of primary access, more or less, versus the three seventy-one?
Not this. We've used, we've used both of them, utilized them.
Yeah. Okay.
This year, we had a huge ice heave, so they had to shift things around. But normally, yes, that is used.
Got it. Okay. I have no further questions.
Council member London?
It seemed to be very reasonable, your approach here, and I think it is very important, very prime deal to go through your property to get water and so forth out of the lake and that. And, yeah, you seem to be very reasonable, and hopefully we can help you out and get the situation resolved.
Council member Fraley?
I know the barricades have been there for many, many years. It is a public road, understand that. Barricades sit, what, about twenty feet back from the sand, approximately?
Yes.
Okay. I think as the city moves forward with a lot of things, we're going to have to look at things that have been done just to let be done. Like we discussed, councilman Hall brought up, I think it was last month's meeting, that we have ordinances and everybody needs to follow them. Okay. Which is a very good point, city as well as residents. I would be in favor of suspending the notice and then sit down and talk, because this hasn't been, the surveys aren't finished or wherever the proper lines are. And there's a lot of different, I mean, this whole city, the lines are really bad. You know, I mean, I've gone through that myself. I don't know if Stephen has anything he wants to say, but in his defense, he's doing his job. He's young, learning. Our ordinances, like when I first came in to the council, I said, this ordinance contradicts this one. Yeah, moving forward, I think we have to look at a lot of things that people have done for twenty, thirty, forty years and will still do. But that's going to affect how we move forward in the city. Okay. That's all I have to say.
I would just like to add some of my thoughts as well. I actually happened to be over at Grandview having lunch the other day and had the opportunity to connect with Dawn and Lonnie, and they were able to take me down and show me the area and explain everything to me. And I had been down there earlier in the spring as well. So I felt like that was helpful to see it firsthand and kind of understand that better from that landscape. From my lens, the role of city government is to be collaborative, is to work with our businesses, to work with our residents. The residents and businesses are at the top. You guys all elect the five of us up here, and then our role is to help set policy that guides our You guys all elect the five of us up here, and then our role is to help set policy that guides our administrative staff at City Hall. And so for me and from the background that I come from, I always find collaboration and partnership is the best approach. And I think based on the email that we received from you, Don, that you guys have been working and trying to get some clarity and direction from Wood Seth, and from my understanding, the city has too. So from my lens, if I had been in the role, I might not have taken an approach which I, to me, felt a little bit punitive. And instead would have tried to sit down, find some collaborative effort, try to figure out how to get through things. We all know the high season's almost over. For those of us that have businesses up here, we've got a couple of weeks left here and then we're gonna go downhill quickly in terms of tourist traffic and then try to find good ways to work together on this in the off-season so that we could come back next year in a solution that works for everybody. And feels in the spirit of partnership and teamwork and collaboration. And I do understand, Councilmember Fraley, what you're saying is, you know, just because things have been done a certain way for thirty or forty years or however long, twenty years, it doesn't mean it's the right way. But also, as I've been onboarding into the role as mayor, which I've been in now, coming up on eight months, I've learned too, there are a lot of discrepancies with our ordinances. And it wouldn't harm the city to take a look at these ordinances and find ways to be more efficient, to be more modern, to take into account where Nisswa is today, where Nisswa wants to go in the future by the voices of all the people, which include all of us as residents too. And so in that regard, as we're working through things, I think taking again, as I said, that collaborative partnership spirit versus sending out citation letters and making people feel pressure and that now City Hall isn't as friendly as maybe it used to be or doesn't represent what they thought it was. I don't know. I think that all those are important factors to take into account. Councilmember Fraley?
Can I make comment? I mean, I think, Mark, you hit it on the head too. You know, a lot of the ordinances and stuff, you know, they haven't been updated for twenty, thirty, forty years in a lot of things. A lot of these things also too, over the last several years, we've got a lot of rules, ordinances and stuff like that, that unless you deal with this on a daily basis, read it and know the history. I see a lot of business owners in this room that know the history out there. Some are shaking their head, but a lot of these rules have been put in there almost to weaponize the rules against certain businesses, certain organization in town over the years. And it's just wrong. You know, out here, I mean, what would it look like if the city actually tried to work with the businesses, help lift up and promote the businesses versus you know, take, you know, enforcement action?
Can you point out an ordinance that was weaponized?
What that?
Can you tell me what ordinances were used to weaponize against the businesses?
One of the ordinances coming up, you know, that was used was, for instance, some of this downtown street vendor stuff is about, I don't know, I'm gonna say about fifteen, sixteen years ago, there's a taco truck that wanted to go in or the old Tower Pizza wanted to go. Some people in the crowd will remember this maybe from back then. Ordinance was created specifically to keep them out of town back in that timeframe. I don't have the exact number, you know?
No, but you gave an example.
You know, we can, we can, we can go through stuff like that. The last time, the last time Grand View did a development project over there, as soon as that was passed, all public roads ceased to exist in town. That rule was changed right after their last development.
All public roads or all private?
I'm sorry, all private roads.
And do you know the reason for that change in ordinance?
Was that development.
No, it was not.
That was a big driver. I mean, we don't need to get into this right now, but I actually was copied on.
Well, that's a false narrative on that one. I'll push that back there. It had to do with the fact that there were a lot of private roads in developments that the people that were living in there didn't realize that they were private and they wanted the city to pave them. When we told them that there was an assessment, they didn't want to. So that's when we changed. We looked at not having private roads, which the discussion we've been having lately is, is changing some to rustic, understand that. But, but so to be aware that some of the HOAs and stuff, that those roads aren't public roads, they're private. And when they come to be redone, that's the HOA that we live there, that's their responsibility now, the cities. And I can understand that too, because they're looking at saying, I'm paying taxes, why isn't my road being taken care of? And to me, that's crazy too. So we gotta look at a lot of things.
Can we, sorry not to interrupt, but can we bring it back to the the, back, back to the, the Grand View discussion? So we have a motion and second on the table. Is there any additional discussion from council related to the motion? Anyone? Okay. All right, then I'd like to call for, yeah. Yes.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that we have some clarity here, because we got a lot of passion in the room and I just want to speak on behalf of city staff. They're pretty fantastic. I've been here just starting my fourth week and I've got nothing but just a really professional atmosphere from them. But we also have to take that passion, we have to combine it with purpose. And that purpose for us, although we have passion and we really respect local businesses and we want to lift them up, we got best practice and we've got ordinances, we've got laws, we've got regulations, we've got rules, we've got policy that we need to work within. There's, there's no fines been issued. We have a very specific process that is outlined in your ordinances which are laws in the, in the city of Nisswa. My understanding from the motion is that you are attempting to unilaterally change the ordinance, suspend it, alter it, which is all intertwined with a number of ordinances. That is gonna cause staff extreme nightmare, extreme complication, potentially a lot of legal problems going down the road for us. We also have general land use ordinance complaints. The complainant is protected in, under Minnesota data privacy. Just in the motion that you have on the table, I don't even know how we respond to those people that have equal concerns about the enforcement and adherence to our ordinances, access to certain areas within our community. I want to make sure that we're gonna have a clear direction that we can legally tell all interested parties in our community what the direction is to staff. So if the motion is to unilaterally change the ordinances, we know that there's a specific process for changing that. And I necessarily don't even disagree with that. And in fact, in consulting with our Planning and Zoning Director, we have some recommendations that are gonna come forward to the council. But my advice from my chairs, the interim city administrators, that we follow the process that's in place to change any ordinances as opposed to a unilateral motion from the council that could cause us some hiccups down the road.
So I think that there, I'm gonna comment on that because I think that there's a misunderstanding. This motion isn't to change ordinances because I know that there is a proper process to go through to change ordinances, which includes public notice and a public hearing before we can actually change those. This is, this motion, depending on how council actions in a vote, would be to give direction to staff to just suspend the administrative violation until things can be worked out. And if we're going to be looking at changing ordinances, making those initiatives down the road and it's pressing pause, if this is something where related to this public ass, access, this has been in place since twenty twenty-four, I think is what your email said with the little shed and the the little, I don't know, you call them barricades?
We, if I may, we put the shed up there in twenty twenty-four, which caused the opportu, which caused the opportunities with the residents. And then we put the barriers up in June because we couldn't continue to utilize the police department to assist us in finding guests who were parking in places which did not allow us to have emergency vehicles or provide a safe environment.
So we'll be framing that then, so at least staff, of course, we're gonna collaborate with Grand View Lodge. They, they haven't been fined. There, we do have to have some form of abatement and abatement is required in our ordinance. So is there a term that you're extending the abatement period? You're extending the general nuisance? We have to tell other residents within the community that this is, we're investigating it. But what do we tell them at that point? That we're working on it into perpetuity? Whenever Grand View Lodge gets around to it, whenever the engineer gets back. I just want to make sure that staff has proper directions so that we can provide that high level of service to all our community members. Cause I know that Grand View Lodge is here today and I totally respect them and their place is beautiful. But I also respect the other people that are in complete opposition to what Grand View Lodge is doing.
So what made you guys elevate the, the interaction with Grand View? Obviously, you know, you just brought up timeframe, whatever. You, you meaning staff, whereas obviously working on a timeframe that Grand View clearly didn't know about what caused you to elevate it. Basically, from my understanding, Lonnie walked in here and got blindsided is what I heard. And no prior communication, he walked in here and that's when he was hit with, whoa, what's going on? So between there, something on your end elevated it. So maybe if you share your timeframe, we would all understand better.
Yeah, the, the timeframe is just really governed by your ordinances, the city council's ordinances that they've established for the staff to follow and
Can you please be specific to what you're talking about right now?
Well, you know, we, we do have a, an investigation that's currently going on for the general law nuisance complaint. So I just want to be kind of careful on how much information that I give out. I do want to speak to the fact that we will collaborate with Grand View Lodge. When they got their notice, they have not been levied a fine at this point. When they got their notice, if they'd have came in and spoke to me, I, I found out today that there's literally an email that went to council that didn't come to myself. I'd be, I'd be certainly willing to work with Grand View Lodge, collaborate with our planning and zoning development to find a solution. But of course, we have to move the ball. We have to be going forward. If you don't go forward and we don't see any type of abatement, even baby steps, then we will have to follow your ordinance, send out an official notice that lets them know they have X amount of days to abate that. But to your point, sir, nobody even reached out to myself or the director of planning after that. They got to receive the notice. So, which is within the notice, if they had difficulties meeting the abatement, we should be collaborating together, but it doesn't sidestep the ordinances.
Councilmembers on?
I do have one question.
Councilmembers on first, if you don't mind, then you, Councilmember Fraley?
I like this. For clarification, what are the ramifications that have been passed along through that citation to Grand View in the event that this is not met? Did I hear properly that there is a hold on potential development or renovation of the existing properties?
That was not in writing. That was said to Lonnie when he came here and requested the over-the-counter permit for the shed.
So right now the city will not give Grand View another permit, is what was communicated? Is that correct?
What was communicated to Lonnie when he came here for his signature.
So that would be already an enforcement step that has been taken?
That is what was said.
A hundred percent, sir. Yes, right in your ordinance that we are not, if we have a general land nuisance complaint that is unsettled, we shall not in your ordinances issue any future building permits. So I know when you say staff, it's where we're just following the, the local ordinances and the regulations. So is those things that we could take a peek at later going down if the council had the appetite to change them and alter them through the process? I would say if we get that direction, we will look at that. I don't know how that necessarily lines up. I think our ordinances are pretty much in line with a few minor changes to Crow Wing County and, and other municipalities in the area, which of course, when we give you a recommendation, we're gonna make sure we're not at odds with the DNR, you know, Crow Wing County, other regulatory agencies. So we want to provide a very good product to you, even if you want to change the ordinances so that we can have a very solid governance and a very solid process for our local residents.
Councilmembers on, you were asking and then Councilmember Hall jumped in. So I don't know if you had additional commentary questions?
It's a comment and it's just an observation. Discretion is a beautiful and ugly thing at the same time, all while trying to color within the lines that we draw for ourselves. So appreciate it and appreciate it. I do think that this situation is complicated to a degree in which we are now complicating it further to try to get to a solution. Cause I do echo your, your points, Keith, and I do echo your points in regards to collaboration. There is no sense for us not to collaborate with one of the largest and longest-term businesses in this community of ours. That is a staple. But for us to try to work with them on the basis of where it sits today and what this violation, or I should say citation essentially implies, it without a doubt raises very big alarms. Hence, some of their executive team having to be in attendance. And I think I would be in that same camp if I was on their side too. However, I also respect the ordinances that we work hard to try to, to try to in, enforce. But again, I go back to the discretion comment. Discretion in a small municipal town like ours, as charming as it is, requires collaboration almost to, to a sense of exhaustion to be able to get us to a comfortable point where we do have a reasonable path forward. And I think that is required for us to be able to work within the rules that we set for ourselves. But to be ever so fluid and changing that we are willing to, to understand that two plus two yesterday maybe equaled four, but it doesn't today. So how do we address this long-term to be able to find a solution for a partner in the community such as Grand View Lodge and many others? Many business owners in this, in this room right now. So we can continue to maintain the charm in this town. That's my only comment.
A councilmember Fraley, you had something else?
I do. That's why I brought up that, that things are changing and we gotta look at these things. There has to be a collaboration. But as Keith said, and, and, and I looked at the ordinance, I was like, okay, that's why. It's something that we may have never done in the past and now it was done. I think maybe foresight is with things coming, w- we need to change. So we need to look at some of those ordinances. I agree. So I was gonna ask mayor, is, is the motion you want to make to suspend just pertaining to the Grand View Lodge? Admin citation or admin citations in general?
So let me re, I, I said so bad. My motion was to suspend the administrate, administrative citation violation that was issued to Grand View Lodge and any other businesses that may have received similar violations.
What other businesses get citations?
There may maybe more and may not. I don't know, because I've asked and I haven't been given all that information.
Okay, so can we just?
We can, but we have to vote on this. You can, if you want to amend it, or I can amend the wording to other businesses.
Let, let's just deal with Grand View, because that's on, on the docket.
So let me rephrase. The motion is to suspend the administrative citation violation that was issued to Grand View Lodge and suspend action on that administrative citation violation, I said until our December council meeting. So that would give the city and Grand View with Wood Seth, right, time to figure out
What's going on?
All these things going on behind the scenes. And then we can revisit it then. So that would be like basically four, a little under four months. And then therefore, due to the suspension of the administrative citation violation, the restrictions shall have no impact on Grand View obtaining other permits or other requests from the city. So in essence, what I'm saying is, from my lens, they should they should be able to get their permit to put up the shed, to put the wedding chair.
So you're gonna vacate the general land nuisance complaint by the protected person that has a complaint? You're gonna vacate that?
I'm gonna call on our city attorney quickly.
I don't have a comment about that. I'm just gonna say that I think what you just did was to amend your motion.
Yeah.
So if that's an amended motion, then you should seek, you should seek a rescindment of the original motion, please. So please rescind your.
Okay, I will rescind the original motion.
Whoever seconded, it should rescind.
I rescind.
Okay. Now with your amended motion on the record, and then I don't know what the other question was.
And I'll hold second, the second.
Okay.
Well, let's, let's, let's throw Keith's question in there. Well, well, let's, let's, let's throw Keith's question in there.
Um, that's what I'm trying to say, they're all intertwined. So, um, if you have a motion that you're gonna unilaterally change an ordinance, um, part of that ordinance is you have a shall clause in there where we shall not issue any permits with a general land usage complaint. In order to go to do that, there's a nuance here. You have to vacate that complaint. You have to somehow say that that complaint doesn't matter and you're gonna direct us staff not to investigate that and not take that under consideration, because that's the trigger for we shall not issue any future permits. So, again, we will collaborate with Grandview Lodge. I have zero problems with that. I even have zero problems, they're not getting fined a hundred dollars a day right now.
Not yet, but the letter says.
Yes, because they have to make progress and they have to find a solution so they can abate the land usage complaint that we have got, that we are investigating. So, when I, I can't over emphasize how all this is intertwined and one citizen is not more valuable the, than the other, and I know you are not suggesting that, so that I'm, I'm seeing how, that's how we approach it. So, uh, it creates a complexity for us.
Council member Hall is.
So, to clarify what you're saying, you're saying this complaint was brought forward by a citizen and you cannot close out that investigation until Grandview has fulfilled everything that's going to take place. Um, with the surveying, the moving of the buildings, barricades, who knows, working with the city. You cannot close out that complaint until all that stuff is done. You can't get back to that individual and say, this is, this is the progress that we're doing, this is what we're working on. Is that, is, to clarify, that's what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying by, by the tone of your, your motion, I want to make sure there's clarity to it. Because it means to me that we are just going to not do anything, we're not gonna move forward, there's no fines. And we're gonna just give them till December to work on this. How does that align with somebody that says, I want to use the city street and there's barricades in the way? And everybody, I understand what people are saying. I, I think, I understand public safety, I understand it a great deal. But also, they should be calling the police, we should be collaborating on that, we should try to keep people from blocking that, we should collaborate with them on that. At the same time, a collaboration so that people that want to have access to that, don't drive up, see barricades and go, why are you barricading a street off that I want to have access to? That's my street. We don't have water solution in this community. We pump everything or use a pumper for everything. So we could use that logic on every single structure in town here, or block off roads, or we could just have an application for all of it. It's really nuanced and tied together. It needs a comprehensive review with the council saying, I want this ordinance, this ordinance, and this ordinance looked at. I want a best practice in front of us and I want it in front of us by this date. And we will definitely do that for the council at the council, full council's direction. No problem with that. I'm just, I want to make sure that you understand the complexity of the matter. It's not for us, just a simple of, we're gonna just make this motion and we're not gonna enforce this ordinance. That's very complex for us. It puts us in a tough spot.
Mayor, if I may, I, I don't think I hear in this motion a, a moratorium on the administrative ordinance as it applies to any other situation in the city. What I heard was a suspension of this activity as it relates to Grandview while you work through this situation. And, and, and if that motion passes, then I don't understand that the administrative citation ordinance as a whole as applied to everybody in the city has now been suspended. It's just with respect to this action. Think I have that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Also, to reiterate, um, Dawn clearly communicated steps that they're taking. They went right down to W S N. They're, they sound like they are very much actively working on getting this resolved in a timely manner. She laid out many steps that they're taking. Are there also steps that you can tell us that the city is working on from the city side they're taking? Have you guys reached out to W S N on your guys' end to try and get this done together quickly? I guess I haven't heard of any plan that the city's working on, on their end to uh, work with Grandview on resolving this.
Well, I mean, I have to parse this out a little bit. First of all, uh, uh, this, it's not the city's responsibility to come up with a plan to get a survey, to try to get them into abatement. It's our, up, we notify them what they're in violation. It's their responsibility to come up with the plan. We can't be using cities services to come, you know, to be negotiating plans for private entities in town. And I, I, I do respect the city attorney's opinion a great deal. It still doesn't deal with the land usage complaint and the shall, there's, there's a shall that we can't issue any more permits. So, if your motion gonna go, then is there gonna be another motion that tells city staff to ignore that ordinance and to issue permits to Grandview Lodge going forward? Even though the, the ordinance says we cannot permit that with an ongoing pending land usage complaint? So that's where I'm talking about nuance.
But this motion does say that. It says, due to the suspension of this administrative, administrative citation violation, the restrictions shall have no impact on Grandview obtaining building permits or other requests from the city.
And again, this, I'm just pointing out that the city has an ordinance that says we shall not do that.
I understand that, but I also think, I think one of the big roadblocks as I see it, and council members on said this too, there's discretion. You know, if, if the city hasn't enforced all these ordinances consistently, repetitively over time with everyone, why now? Why not look at a way to work through this? Uh, with Grandview, we're not asking to change the ordinances. I do agree with our city attorney and his interpretation. Um, we do have a motion and second on the floor, I'd like to call the vote and I'd like to do a roll call vote. Um, oh, go ahead, Dawn.
May I?
Yes.
You know, our season is ending and the shed will go away, the barriers will go away. Usually the end, middle of September to the middle of October, somewhere in that shade. That's when we stop doing our water activities and water sports and get prepared for winter. Is it acceptable that we put those dates for the violation, that it's removed during that time? And that helps us move forward, then to come up with a solution for the next spring with the city in December?
Thank you. Appreciate the input. Thank you. Yes, we do have a motion on the floor, so I would like to take a roll call vote. Um, would you like me to read the motion one more time before we go to a roll call vote?
I would.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the administrative citation violation that was issued to Grandview Lodge and uh, suspend action on that until our December council meeting. Therefore, due to the suspension of the administrative citation violation, the restrictions on Grandview shall have no impact on obtaining building permits or other requests from the city. Um, council member Hall, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Council members on.
Yes.
Council member London.
Yes.
Council member Fraley.
Nay.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, under planning and zoning ordinances, enforcement consultant, and additional changes in direction. Um, one of the items that I also uh, had that I'd like to bring up is related to the special use permit. Um, I'd make a motion to direct staff to bring back a proposal to council at our next meeting to look at modifying the special use permit, um, as it relates to the fee amount and also the number of business days required to file a special use permit. It currently says fifteen business days and to look at reducing that. Um, and for staff to come back with a proposal at our next council meeting for council to consider. Um, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, now, before I open it up to council discussion, um, did I see anyone from the Nisswa Lions here? Would you like to come up and speak at all related to the uh, situation that came about with the pork on a stick?
Yeah, my name is Dale Christensen. I'm a Nisswa Lions Club member. And uh, we had uh, intended on uh, selling pork on a stick at the last uh, what, what do you call the, the event? That was last.
Crazy Days.
Crazy.
Yes, um, and we were denied uh, access because we didn't give fifteen days. So we ended up going to uh, Schaefer's parking lot instead. Um, and they, we were told that we were allowed to do that, but, but because they would overlook that, we, because we didn't, still didn't, needed a permit for, for being there. And I just think it, um, w- we don't need special treatment, but we should have, because we're very involved in the community and everything we raise goes back to the community. Um, if you could overlook some of that uh, stringent guidelines, I think that would be very beneficial for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Dale. Um, I'd like to open up to council if there are any questions for Dale or the Nisswa Lions. We'll start this direction first. Council member Fraley?
I have none.
Council member London?
You know, on an event like that in Crazy Days, when you set up downtown Nisswa, what type of uh, money can you bring in? That would go back to the city and other things like that?
Uh, say that again, I didn't hear ya.
You know, when you come up and do your event here, like on something like Crazy Days, Pork on a Stick, and you know, you raise a lot of money and it goes back into the city and other things up here. What kind of uh, money do you think you, what kind of revenue do you make on something like that?
Well, um, the last time we set up in the city, um, it was close to three thousand dollars that we raised. Um, but that was net, that wasn't gross, so.
How long have you been a Lion up here?
I've been a Lion here about four years.
And during your four years and in the past, uh, I'm assuming that the Lions have done this in the past quite a bit, haven't they?
Uh, yes, although uh, the pork wagon was kind of not used when I first came on board because of, you know, we have a lot of elderly members. And until some younger guys came, we got it re, uh, re-going again now. And we are, uh, in fact, we've got requests to go to Pequot Lakes. We got requests to go to the um, uh, uh, football games uh, for Brainerd High School. Uh, we've got requests to go to Cross Lake and it's kind of disheartening when we get turned down here in our own town in Nisswa.
You represent a pretty nice organization and uh, members of the community benefit from that. I want to thank you for your service, junior group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council members on.
I have no questions.
Council member Hall? Thank you. Um, Kelly, were there any downtown business owners or did you have anything from the downtown? Um, any of the folks related to the? Okay, sounds good. Um, well, if there are no other questions or comments, I can read the motion one more time. Okay, um, I'd move that council direct staff to bring back a proposal to the council at our September meeting to look at modifying the special use permit, um, as it relates to the fee and then the current timeline. So currently, the special use permit calls for fifteen business days, um, to submit. Um, for council to bring that back to us at our next meeting for review and consideration.
Could we also direct them to look at the language, the way that it's written for current downtown business owners? Meaning, you know, if you're downtown business owner and you want to put up a sandwich board out front or uh,
Let's take that as a separate motion.
Yeah, I just want them to look at that language altogether with it too, you know?
And I just, uh, I read the motion again, I just have one last thing to share too. Like so, Crazy Days, which is a big tradition and it's kind of like the last hurrah for businesses to maybe offload sale items. It drives a lot of people to town and it's a great event, um, for everybody, even our municipal, uh, the pickle. I think a lot of business owners perhaps didn't know that they needed to fill out and submit a special use permit. And so from my understanding, only one business along Main Street did submit a permit, nobody else did. And it's, I don't think it's, no one's trying to skirt the ordinances or not be a good steward of the city. But I just think it's, people, folks didn't know, right? There's no nefarious intent there. And so again, it's to that point, like to be so restrictive or punitive when there is discretion there, that's why I think it's, that's why I'm putting this motion forward, just to have staff come back to us with some recommendations in September, um, specifically related to that permit, because this kind of came up and was a big, a big, uh, big little dust up for, for a couple of weeks. So, if there's nothing else from council, um, I would like to do a roll call vote again. I'll start with council member Hall.
Yes.
Council members on.
Yes.
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 Beat me the punch. And I also vote yes. Okay, great. Um, council member Hall, you wanted to talk about temporary signage, uh, sandwich board signage, and I do see we have a, a business owner here too, that, um, if you have a motion you'd like to bring forward and then we can second to have discussion, we can call the, a business owner up.
Yeah, I, I think this just plays into some of the downtown zoning ordinances, you know? Whether it be a sign, a sandwich board, what went on with Crazy Days as far as somebody setting up a tent, um, displaying something a little bit out front, even today when you drive up and down uh, Nisswa, just today. I made note of it, there are a couple businesses that still had a table out, maybe a little leftover Crazy Day stuff out on the out, right in front of their building, things like that, that just the ordinance addresses all that and just allows more freedom to businesses to uh, just, I guess, operate their business without scrutiny. So, I don't know what that language looks like.
So would you want the motion to also have council direct staff to review the ordinances related to signage?
Yeah.
And come back to council, um, they might need a little more time than September, but come back to council by the October meeting? With some recommendations?
Yep.
So is that a motion?
Yes, I will make that a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, co, yes.
The only thing I add to that point though, in terms of timeframe is, we will be out of season, right?
Yeah.
Um, I know we got budgets right around the corner. If there is more time needed, perhaps we can afford them, maybe even to the end of the year.
Yeah.
Do you want to amend, rescind and rescind and then amend accordingly per council members on's recommendation?
Sure, I rescind until the end of the year.
Do you want to second that still?
Second it.
Okay, perfect. Um, Sean, do you want to come up and address the council?
My name is Sean Weldon. Uh, we own Lake Latitude fifty-three fourteen Nisswa Avenue. Um, speaking for a lot of the business owners off the Main Street, obviously, if we could have bought something on Main Street, we would have loved it. Um, but we're off the beaten path. Those signs out there are so important. Weekly, my wife will say, or employees will say that people will be from out of town, they'll come in and they'll say, we wouldn't have ever known you were down here without the signs that are down there. So, um, if, if, I guess we're looking at an ordinance, I, even if it had to be something where there was a, a permit uh, to be placed, even if it was a higher amount, so we don't have fifty signs down there. And I don't think we are right now. I mean, no one's, we're still putting signs out. Uh, the Legion puts a sign out, Ace Hardware puts a sign out. Uh, so I, I don't re, I, I, I guess I can't state enough how important those signs are to us. So if, when looking at an ordinance, to allow sandwich boards to be placed out during the day, taken down at night. And uh, you know, again, a fee based thing to, to make it so where maybe everybody doesn't want to to have a sign out there, but it's that important to us to have signs out there. And I know they're on city property or on city's, you know, corners or whatever. But again, I, I'm, I guess I would just ask for uh, leniency until we come up with something. And then uh, uh, hopefully come up with something for ordinances regarding that, so.
Yeah, council members on.
Sean, are, are sandwich boards, feel like it's a stupid question, but are the sandwich boards the ones that?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Simple but effective. And then, you know, the, the other part that. And then, you know, the other part that, we were working with Bethany with the chamber, with putting out directional signs out here and that can got kicked down the road. I mean, we brought stuff forward and then when Stephen came on, it was lost in emails or whatever. So there's been a, you know, an effort to try to get something out there. And I know working with Bethany, she's like, eventually, when those signs go up, you need to get your sandwich boards out of there, which again, it was, it was great. But when they put up, when they were talking about putting up the signs, they wanted to put every business that was off-street on there, the dentists, you know, again, it takes away from, those businesses don't, you know, don't depend on walking traffic to come down to them. No one's going to go down to the dentist office and, you know, get a tooth filled quickly. So that's, that's, you know, something along that line we're open to. And it was something that there was money allotted for. I believe the amount was ten thousand dollars, going back to Bethany, so. Yeah, that's, just want to reiterate how important that is to our business and other businesses off the beaten path.
Does any other council members have any questions for Sean?
I just know that this is something we've been looking at for quite a while. And yes, Bethany was closest one to it, she's not here anymore, talking about, yes, signage there, yes. Something needs to be done and something needs to be done in the interim too.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So the motion again is to council direct staff to come back by the end of the year, correct? As it relates to these ordinances around signage, temporary signage with some?
Signages and, yeah, like display stuff.
And display. So that is a motion on the floor and we will go to a roll call vote again. I'm going to start this direction, councilmember Fraley.
Yes.
Councilmember London.
Yes.
Councilmember Zon.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
And I also vote yes, motion carries. Okay. I had one other item that I wanted, actually, before that. Are there any other folks in the audience that would like to come forward and share anything related to planning and zoning?
My name is Alan Trinkins, I reside at five-three-nine-two National Way Road. I moved here over sixty years ago, or not, not quite sixty years ago. Perry Gordon was a part-time policeman, drove his own car, had his own gumball on the top of the car. We got along very well. I'd like the council people to know this. The true definition of fascism is private ownership with government control. There's getting to be too darn much for these business people. I'm going to ask you to start, when you go through your ordinances, start rescinding some, not adding to. I want to see our businesses thrive here, not be hamstringing all little, jump through this loop and jump through that. That's all I've got to say and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to raise a point for the full council related to the variance application. This came to me from a resident and I think it's good to have this discussion before the public. So in, in the variance application and planning and zoning on page two, there is a paragraph that says, wait, not that one, sorry. Okay, on page four. So after a lot of the information boxes that the applicant has to fill out, it says, note, the applicant shall be responsible for all the city's professional costs in reviewing the proposal, including but not limited to legal, engineering, planning and financing assistance, a development contract prepared by the city attorney may be required by this ordinance. And then there's a space for the applicant's initials, right? So an applicant signs, signs that. So why I'm bringing this up is, one of the applicants, and I don't know if she'll want to get up and speak after this, but they, they received notification that they had a legal bill from the city attorney for, I don't know, like nine hundred dollars or something, as it related to their variance application. So I'm not disputing what we have in here. What I'm simply stating is, I think that there is a way to be proactive and communicative, so no one's ever surprised by receiving a bill that they have, are required to pay as it relates to their application, that they should have maybe some knowledge of some range that's coming forward instead of just, hey, here's a nine hundred dollar bill, you have to pay it. And then also not having received a copy of the invoice, but having to come to City Hall and write a check without any itemized invoice, so no knowledge of, you know, how was the time used? You know, was it, you know, point seven-five hours on this email to applicant or this, you know, whatever it is, how attorneys do their billing. So what I'd like to see is specifically related to the situation for a copy of this invoice given to all members of the council of the detailed billing statement covering the months where this particular issue was dealt with. And I'm talking about the coach of ours, they, you can come up Bobby. So so that there's full transparency and visibility to the full council. Because I don't know if anyone else was aware of this, but this came to me and I'd like to allow Bobby to say a few words.
So hello everyone, my name is Bobby Kociefer and I live at four-one-nine-six Upper Roy Lake Road here in Nisswa. And we had submitted a variance request. And we did initial that or sign that area where it said that we would be responsible for the expenses related to attorney fees or anything else related to our request. What we, what we didn't understand was that was regardless of who was requesting attorney time or other things related to it. So when we were told that our bill was over eight hundred dollars for the attorney, we had said, well, we've not used the attorney. And they said, well, you didn't, but your neighbors did. And we said, well, then wouldn't you bill our neighbors for that? And we were told that the fee goes to the owner of the property that is under dispute. And I don't feel that language clearly states that. I also would just ask for consideration that never in anywhere else am I aware that someone could rack up attorney's fees, which are significant, and they get charged to someone else without their knowledge or consent. And, and so I know I'm being told that, well, you gave consent when you initial that or signed that. I guess that language wasn't clear to me and I didn't understand that that meant that someone who is actively suing me could actually rack up as many legal fees as they wanted with an attorney and I am on the hook for it. And so when my husband came in for a different reason, he said, oh, and you have this attorney bill here that you owe. And that's when we were first told and he told us the total amount and my husband just paid it. And I said, well, what's the line items for each of the, what adds up to the eight hundred plus dollars? And we are, we put that request in, I think, Friday to get an itemized bill. And so it's only Tuesday, so we can be patient with that. But I would just ask some consideration because it was a little bit of a surprise. And I actually wouldn't want this to get out there, that this is how this works, because someone could really take advantage of that in a negative way.
Councilmember, oh, councilmember, oh.
Please, let me.
Sure, Tom.
Nobody racked up legal fees, your neighbor didn't rack up legal fees. What happened here was your application was made when you were in the middle of a lawsuit over title to that property. And the matter was coming for the planning commission when the attorney for your opponent in that litigation advised the city of this, the city would have had no other reason to know it. So this is really a one-off, I would say, this fact pattern. I don't take directions from neighbors of neighbors on applications to accrue or incur legal fees. This specific situation required me to review the lawsuit and to review all of the documents in the lawsuit so that this, so I could advise the city planner and the planning commission about whether it even had the ability to grant the application that was before the planning commission in light of the litigation. So a very unique fact pattern. But just so everybody's clear here, I, I don't go incurring legal fees without, without direction. And the direction here was from city staff to review this so that the city, the planning commission could be advised about whether it could proceed with an active application. If this, if not for that process, then the planning commission, unaware of that litigation, could very well have issued you a zoning permit, a variance that you were asking for, that would have then embroiled the city in some temporary restraining order action by the neighbor who you were litigating with. And my obligation here is to protect the city from those kinds of things. Your application triggered that, the fact that you're involved in litigation with somebody over the title to that property is what triggered all of that. So I just want to be clear.
May I respond?
Yeah, I have one thing real quick and Tom, thank you for sharing all that. Me bringing this up wasn't to question like your work at all with the city. It was just to say, is there a way that we can be more communicative with folks? So no one's surprised with the bill, like, hey, because you are involved in this litigation, you know, we're going to have to engage our city attorney and it might be, I'm making this up. It might be three to five hours' time, who knows, it could be more, it could be less. So you should be expecting a legal expense with it.
And perhaps when you consider, if, if you do move forward with revising that form, perhaps that's a question on the variance submission, is are you currently under any legal movement that's might be asked, it didn't ask us that and we didn't feel that that was related to our request bill? Because as of today, that land is wholly ours and legally ours. And that's what we were working under and that's what our attorney was advising us to do based upon today's situation. We don't live under what-ifs because that would drive us all crazy if we needed to do that. But as of today, that land is wholly ours.
Titles in question though, again, I bring you back to the fact that if the city hadn't been made aware of that as it was, then the planning commission, completely unaware, could have granted your request. And like I say, likely would have triggered the opponent in your litigation to then sue the city for restraining relief so that you couldn't do what you were granted because title's that issue. So I don't know how to make a form asking people, are you involved in litigation that might, that we should know about? I don't know who is responsibility that is, whether it's you as the applicant not to apply for relief or land use permits when there's a question about title, but that's what that litigation was. And Mayor, the only reason I had the reaction I did was the comment that Mrs. Kociefer made about the city attorney willy-nilly racking up legal fees because the neighbor asked him to. That's a rough paraphrase, but that's what that was.
I would like to apologize too then for that. It was just without my, without my knowledge that someone could rack up fees without our knowledge.
Okay. Keith?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that. I just want to make sure that the members in the, the audience know that the city attorney act does not incur expenses as an independent entity. He assists staff, I will work with Tom, we'll try to come up with some, a reasonable response regarding legal fees. But I just want the council to be aware, it, it, I mean, the size, the scope, the complexity, legal issues pending legal issues can be part of that complexity. So the city attorney helps the city itself navigate all, all legal issues. So I, I will, I apologize if that happens, but it is certainly not the city attorney's fault. And I, I can understand why you might say racking up is a little offensive, but we do ask him for help and he is working at, RB has to provide us the best legal advice possible. So I just want to make sure that the council was clear on that.
And that bill has been paid in full by us, so I'm not here to dispute that. I'm just asking, I just thought that would be good to have additional clarity. And I don't think it's unreasonable for us to ask for an itemized invoice for that, that we have, that I'm sure we will receive, so thank you very much.
On that, we're, we're a good team, so we will, we'll figure something out on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Does council have any comments or questions? No? Okay. Okay, then next, Stephen had sent a email, I think to all of council and the planning commission regarding evaluation materials from Chris Pence. Stephen, do you want to come up and, and share that?
Thank you Mayor and council and members of the public. So yes, the planning and zoning department was directed by city council to engage with Chris Pence regarding ordinance revisions as it relates to land use matters. So the ask was to have a comparative analysis from Crow Wing County's ordinances to City of Nisswa's ordinances. We have received that response from him. The process for alterations of chapter twenty are to be initiated by yourselves, public or staff to then provide recommendation to planning commission as to steps moving forward. And so yes, this material has come in showing where the similarities and differences are. Chris did note in his summary here that there are more similarities than differences related in both ordinances. And that Nisswa has spent a considerable amount of time and resources in the last three years updating the ordinances to kind of reflect the partnership that we have between Crow Wing County and the City of Nisswa. We share a lot of lakefront with, you know, other neighboring municipalities. And coordination of our ordinances to allow a seamless transition between those shorelines and jurisdictions is in, I think, everyone's best interest. We have same standards as it relates to vegetative clearing, riprap standards, so that there's not a clear line as you look down the shore, that, okay, you can see where Nisswa is and you can see where, you know, Gull Lake, East Gull Lake is lake shore or county land. So harmonizing all of that is the intent of, you know, this, this document here. He did highlight in his summary and his detailed comparison report, different areas that the county has, you know, for example, no minimum residential dwelling size or the requirement of accessory structures. So there's specific language in here and I recently got this, so I haven't had the time to compile a specific recommendation to the planning commission to initiate that ordinance revision. But the next step would be to draft the language or a recommendation of the language, disseminate that to all of the applicable agencies such as the DNR, because we do have a lot of shoreline rule that applies within Nisswa. Allow them the public comment period and then move forward to the actual public hearing for that and adoption by, recommendation by, for adoption by planning commission and then subsequent adoption by the council, publication and then ordinance language takes effect. So it's a little bit about the process for changing some of these ordinances that have been discussed tonight. Anything in chapter twenty has to follow through that process and that does take time. And, you know, that's why I'm here, is to help you guys through that. And so we've got the response and I hope that we can foster collaboration as discussed tonight, so.
Does anyone in council have any questions for Stephen at this point in time?
Are you specifically asking us for something with this document tonight?
Nope, I didn't, I only saw that agenda item with no substance. So they did talk about zoning ordinances, additional changes in direction. So I felt it would be appropriate to disseminate that tonight and speak to it if that is where the discussion went, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, oh, go ahead.
Real quick in regards to, yeah, I only got it at eleven o'clock today, so I haven't had a chance to review it. But I would say that we want to put this on a bigger agenda item coming up in the future after we've all had a chance to review it and go through it further before we give any direction back.
Yeah, we can maybe look at adding it to the September council meeting.
Yep.
And we have a workshop too.
A workshop, yeah.
There's multiple opportunities. I do see a couple other folks in the audience, I'm not sure if they want to come to the microphone, Katie and Jake.
Hello, my name is Tom Mackel and I, I came here today because the simple deal, I want to build a little lean-to off the side of my garage. It's not very big, it's not in anybody's way, it's way off the property lines. It's not very big. It's not in anybody's way. It's way off the property lines. But in order to even apply for the permit, I have to get my septic tank pumped and inspected, which will cost me more than the shed itself. And I think it's a little bit ridiculous that I need to have a septic tank pumped and inspected to build a little lean to off my garage. I, I think it's kind of ridiculous.
Do you want to share your address with the council?
That'd be two, five, five, four, two Highland Avenue.
I guess Keith, Stephen or To- uh, Tom.
Well, it's not really a specific agenda item.
Yeah.
I mean, we're going to have to sit down and meet with them. We'll try to collaborate with him. We'll try to inform him on our, our local ordinances, our regulations. Uh, if there's something that we can do to, to help the gentleman, we certainly will. If we have ordinances that prevent it, unfortunately, we'll, we'll, we'll let him know that too. Uh, but we'll definitely work with him and communicate with him.
Okay.
Oh, we lost Mark. Do any council members have? No. Okay. Thank you. Well, staff will follow up. Jake.
Hello there. Good evening. Thank you for the time. Uh, Jay Coogier, Foxy Properties, where's our, two, five, five, two, seven Church Street. Okay. You know, we've been over this laundromat scenario. You, you haven't been through this yet because you're new, but through other meetings with connection fees and, um, you know, engineering for wastewater and stormwater, I should say, not wastewater. It's just been the worst process in the world to try to build a building in downtown Nisswa. And I guess that's my whole point of standing up here is, is just the frustration and, you know, having to, to try to beg to build something in the community to, to make it better. Last Monday, my wife was bringing some recycling out to the, to the recycle cans out front and Stephen and, and Keith were walking around out there and not once did either one of them come to the front door to introduce themselves, which we know Stephen, but we don't know you. And you're out there walking around telling us that we need to hold on and, and hold up and, and you know, we can't go further. Um, we already have a permit. So the fact that A, you didn't come and introduce yourself and say, hey, do you have a moment of time to, to visit with us? My wife is trying to conduct business and that was not convenient at all for, for you to have that conversation with her at that point. It's just, it's just frustrating. And then there's no answer or follow up to any part of that communication after that. And again, we already have a permit, so I don't really know what the problem is, but this stems back from a, a 2019 dispute with when we tried to buy this land and, and build the original building that's there. Um, property lines and, you know, this, where the street is and easements and things like that. I mean, none of that was put to bed in 2019 from the city when um, we bought that land and that's when it should have been put to bed. There's, all of that should have been drawn out very clear, cut forth. Um, so that anybody that buys land to the north of us, which I know that that's an ongoing dispute with our new neighbors. Um, I don't know their name off the top of my head, so forgive me for that, but if, if that would have been laid out the right way in 2019, we wouldn't have had some of the challenges that we've had today. So just from a planning and zoning standpoint, anybody that builds a building in Nisswa or wants to build a building in Nisswa going forward, shouldn't have to go through the hoops that we went through to try and, and do that. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I think that was what I had on my list under planning and zoning unless anyone has anything else from the council.
No, I guess just one thing, you know, on there and it says direction at the end. Speaking for myself, obviously we have a lot of representation of downtown business owners in the room again throughout the community. Um, there are several business owners that are not here tonight that in over the last couple of weeks, uh, I haven't gone a day without getting contacted myself as a council person. And other council people are nodding their heads. That hasn't been contacted by a downtown business owner with a similar situation to what we've heard tonight. And that word direction up there, I'll just speak for myself. But the direction that I see that we're going over the last couple of weeks and what has happened and, and what these business owners has expressed to me is concerning disheartening and completely 180 degrees the other direction that I as a council want to go with this town. Like I say, what happens if we worked with the businesses on the front end to try and raise, raise them up instead of push them down? What happens if we, if we, um, sit down and talk out stuff first? What happens if we, um, communicate better? It's just very disheartening. Like I say, there's many business owners that aren't here tonight that I've heard from. I have countless emails from them. And I just, yeah, my thing is we're not going in a good path, a good direction, or a healthy direction at all. And my goal as a council person is to stop it and to turn that around and go the other direction as fast and quickly as we can and with whatever and whatever action needs to happen on my end with this group of people to make that happen.
Thank you. Council members on?
Every organization, every business, every municipal or large city in this country is hindered by bandwidth. We have this little time to do this much. It is not an uncommon problem. And totally cognizant to our city staff, because there's been a lot of changes as of late, right? Your seat in particular has had quite a bit of change in the past few months. Point of the matter is though, is just this. I, I think that we have an opportunity. Every problem, every solution is an opportunity. And I think we all have an opportunity to be able to steer our concerted efforts to finding solutions. And we understand in the midst of, of what this town is, which is a cyclical tourist based economy. And we have not one, not two, but three, maybe three and a half months of full traffic coming into this town. That's generating revenue for families that pay taxes in this dang town of ours. Why do I try to be as emphatic as I could possibly be about that is simply due to the nature of, of what we are trying to do to support and, and embolden them to have success, to, to be vested stakeholders in the community, to then in turn help guide us as to, uh, as a city, city council and the city staff to work with them. We are a partnership. It is a symbiotic relationship. And for us to, uh, understand what, what some businesses are up against, uh, and for the businesses to understand what we are up against. It's a, it's a unique, uh, situation, but there's no reason why we can't come to full terms and, and find a path forward. So I, I encourage in regards to the last piece of, uh, item C here in direction is guiding the direction to be that we have feedback so we can take this collaboration to the next level. The chambers feedback has always been valuable for us. And it helps guide us and gives us more well-rounded opinions versus a putting a peg in a square hole. I would love to see this city take proactive steps in the three, six, nine, 12 month timeframe. So when we get to the 26 season, come Memorial Day weekend, we can look back at this meeting, just like we did the downtown master plan meeting a few months ago and say, you know what? There was some progress made there because we had to take our gloves off a little bit and scrap. But we found a common sense path forward and we found solution. And I believe that we have people up here and we have people on this side and watching and not here that are all on that same page and are all capable of taking that step forward. And bearing with us as we're getting now into budget season and you understand what we're now working with and our staff in the capacity and limited capacity that they have, but I do believe that this is a call to action for all of us. And it's nothing that we haven't been able to identify before. Uh, council member Hall and I have been discussing this. What do you say, Joe? Once a week, two times a week? Every day. Cause there is that much to do. But again, he runs a business, I run a business. We all have personal, and Jennifer and, and, and Mark. And I know you're, Bruce is always working out, but we, we have, we all have a lot going on. But there's no reason why we can't, we can't take that true next step forward and, uh, and work with the city staff to this capacity. So we have a, a very good path forward for 2026.
Well said. Uh, council member London, do you have any?
Well, I've been contacted by some area business people downtown Nisswa, some residents and so forth about the things we're talking about here tonight. I think we need to offer these people, the taxpayers, some compassion, some understanding and a lot of flexibility to make it happen. And, um, I think that we need to understand their needs and their purpose and work with them.
Council member Fraley? Okay. Um, I, oh, council member Hall, yeah.
I do have one last thing. I guess I'd like to make a motion. Actually, you know, we have Chris Pence with the county working on the rules. I'd like to make a motion to reach out to Crow Wing County to see, um, what their ability would be to come in on maybe as an interim consultant oversight with our planning and zoning and just reach out to them for a conversation. Um, I know that they've helped many other cities in the area like this in the past, but make a motion to contact them and just see, see what they could do to help us in the area of planning, zoning, ordinance enforcement and stuff.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, council, uh, council member, I'll let council member Fraley go first this time, then council members on?
By others. I know some of their ordinances are a little bit more restrictive than ours. But if they have something that we can work with, I don't have any problem with that. Kind of like working with Chris. I mean, he's good at looking at the ordinances.
Okay, council members on?
Comparing this path to where we were with Chris Pence, and Steve, you might have to correct me here. We were working with Chris first half of last year, I want to say. It's been a while. Is that, do, are you thinking it'd be in a similar capacity as it has been in years past?
I would say that
To a greater degree.
I would say we had reached out to the county to just see what the options are. I don't know what the county options would be for them to come in. I know in Cross Lake there, um, years back, they, uh, they actually took over the Cross Lake planning and zonings for, I'm going to say five plus years up there. And they, they helped run that and restructure that for Cross Lake in the past. But just to reach out and see, you know, we have a lot of unique challenges as we move forward. We have the land yet to talk about south of town. Um, Bethany started this ordinance, um, process, you know, Mark, you brought up, you know, this stuff hasn't been dated for 20, 30 years. What we have before that Chris has put together, it's just, um, one section, but much of what we talked about tonight, even the downtown businesses, the signs, stuff like that, um, it's all outdated. There's still such a bigger picture to look at. You know, with the downtown business thing, I mean, we're playing catch up for the last 20, 30 years because this stuff has not been kept up to speed. And we need to play rec, rapid catch up to 2025. Crow Wing County, you know, they've done tremendous amount of work over the last 10 years down there to keep caught up and I just, yeah. I don't know, bigger capacity, maybe, maybe turn the whole thing over to them. Maybe have them come in on a consultant basis, maybe, I don't know, but I just, I, I just, in the last eight years, and correct me any staff, but in the last eight years to give audience perspective, there's been eight, approximately eight different people in the role, you know, here. So there's been, in the last decade, there's just been tremendous turnover within the city with our staff, with what's going on. Kind of, we're going this direction and we're going that direction. We heard it from a downtown business owner. Hey, Bethany was here. We almost got signs up to help all the businesses and now that fell off. Where is that? You know, to kind of keep a comprehensive thing throughout the city. So I think it has all that included. But I'd like to, uh, reach out to the county and just see what they could do to help us.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments from council, discussion? Oh, Keith?
Mayor, could you just drill down a little bit or councillor Hall? I mean, that's kind of a we need a little bit more direction, I guess. So are we, are we looking at a timeframe that they would help us? Are we looking at costs? Are we looking at a sub, a contracted employee? Are we asking if they will, they'll help us in the capacity as a county employee? Um, what, what do you, what do you envision us to, um, drill down on so that we can just frame this issue so we can get you what you want?
Mi- maybe one of them would be willing to come up here and just have an open dialogue or speak with us at a council meeting. You know, so we could understand, you know, um, everything underneath the, the sun.
Services offered.
Yeah, services offered by them. I know that they've helped out, like you say, other cities. And what has that looked like? I would, I would let them lead that discussion on what they've done in the past for other cities, cities. So maybe they could come up here.
Sir, if it's a, I mean, are they going to work as a city employee? Would they work as a county employee?
That's all questions for them.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
And I think Keith, we've, we've worked, uh, previously with the land services director, Gary Griffin. He's come up and done some workshops and things. So he's, I think somewhat familiar with our city. Um, so we have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Otherwise I'd like to call the vote and I'm going to do a roll call vote again.
I wouldn't mind using the, the county in a consulting capability to help us go through the ordinances. I think they have done in the past. I would not want the county to take over our planning and zoning.
So I think the motion is just to
To engage with.
To engage.
Yeah, I know. I, I was just, this is what I heard, so.
Okay. I'm going to start with you, council member London.
I, uh, I think that we should, uh, I'm in favor and I say yes, let's do it.
Okay, council members on?
Yeah.
Council member Hall, council member Fraley?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, I think that's it for planning and zoning. Um, just looking at the clock um, for time management standpoint, because our regular council meeting is at seven. Um, and we still have interim city administrator and 2026 budget discussion. We'll move next to interim city administrator. And I put this on the agenda, I think, because Keith, you started. Um, I was out of town traveling. I don't, I don't know if Jesse was traveling too and everyone was really busy, but we never really did have that kind of calibration session where we could have a conversation and dialogue and all get on the same page with priorities. Um, I know you've been doing some work over your three weeks here and have kind of identified some priorities as, as you've seen for yourself as it relates to city hall. So I'd like to turn it to you to share that with, with the full council and to get council feedback if, how we feel about that.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just been a little over three weeks and, um, the onboarding was, um, there's your chair. So, uh, but I do have 35 years of government experience, so, um, but I'd like to just open with, um, I think my number one charge is probably just running operations. Um, and staff has been top notch, has been absolutely fantastic. So, um, that makes the process a lot easier. As far as what my objectives are, I think I'm reading the council pretty well. That's an executive search, uh, to find my replacement. I do have, um, two quotes that'll be in this week, uh, two proposals. Um, I'll get them to the council soon. That's Charlene Stevens and, um, Mr. Humpel. Um, they're both well-known throughout the state of Minnesota on executive searches. Um, if you select one of them, they will do a presentation to you, um, so you can see, um, which firm that you'd like to go with. Um, and maybe, um, on the flip side, the council eventually hears the proposals, sees the proposals and they decide to go to a different direction, which is totally prerogative of the, of the council. Um, an organizational structure, we're, we're down in our administrative area, um, working on a proposal for, uh, council to look at so that we can hire staff. Uh, we have a strategic planning, uh, council plan, uh, coming up process. It's an eight hour day. Um, that's, uh, the time changes on the regular meeting. Um, I do have a facilitator coming in for that, very experienced facilitator, if that date is approved. Working on budget. We have talked about a comprehensive plan down the road. Uh, we're looking at special use permits, planning and zoning, the processes, maybe a lean process. We got collective bargaining coming up with, um, our union members. Uh, we've got some potential league of Minnesota, uh, training for counselors. policy and procedures. I'd really like to have a nice transition document for the new city administrator that comes in that all nicely tabbed out, everything that they know what's going on, what's in progress, what to expect. We need to take a look at an organizational assessment. And then there's some other things that, um, I, I got on the list. But hopefully, if things progress the way we'd like them, uh, those will be for the new person that'll be sitting in my chair that will lead, uh, Niswa well into the future. So, um, that's, that's my report, um, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to open it up to council. Is there any questions, input, feedback, thoughts, um, for Keith? We'll start at this on council member Fraley. Any questions, input, insights, right? We just put interim city administrator because we hadn't had a chance yet to all calibrate with Keith since he started.
Have no complaints. So, um.
It's okay if you don't have anything. Okay. Council member Hall?
Yeah, I guess. I've got a few thoughts. You know, I guess I'll just speak openly, you know, what I just said, you know, with the planning and zoning and stuff. You know, um, new to this town. You know, this is the first council meeting. But, um, yeah, I guess I just, you know, don't feel super positive about currently what's going on, you know, based upon all the butts and all the chairs out here, you know? It just, it quite honestly has not been positive, like I say, by the number of phone calls that I've gotten on a daily basis. And so I don't know, um, what to discuss in an open meeting or if we gotta do a closed meeting or what. I'm not sure what my next steps would be to continue to talk about stuff. But that, that'd be my, that'd be my comments right now.
Yes, Madam Mayor, under Minnesota statute, data practice is 13D O3. I believe it's a subdivision right underneath that or O5. If you want to talk about performance issues, you'll have to close the meeting. And then you'll have to follow the process that's outlined in your Minnesota League of Cities guideline.
Yes. The, um, labor attorney sent me an email. I was just trying to find it. So that's something we can look at doing. Council members on?
Welcome again. Uh, Keith, question in regards to our outgoing city clerk, Kiki. She is working remote full-time?
She is, uh, well, uh, she's in a remote work capacity. And other than that, um, I'd have to take a look at personnel data to make sure I'm releasing the correct information regarding the rest.
Fair. Uh, in that regard, cause I, you know, in my industry, we call the word remote a very shady gray area because we never really know. Uh, remote's just remote. Are the duties that Kiki, uh, as city clerk, uh, as she was previously filling, are, have any of those duties passed on to Maggie? That have stacked on top of her role as financial specialist?
Oh, most definitely. I think, uh, and, and other staff. I think staff's been super wonderful while picking up and being a fantastic team and moving the ball forward. Absolutely. Yep.
And they are great staff. Absolutely.
They're great. And we're, uh, and I'm in the process. I'm, I'm, I, I really do feel I'll have something to the, to the council as far as division of, uh, uh, tasks and responsibilities, workload distribution. I've got some ideas, I think, uh, as far as what might, uh, advance the, uh, the city in a positive direction and more maybe aligned with their actual, uh, classification that they are working underneath.
Understood. Um, so from what I'm hearing from you, you would say that it's true that Maggie, at least for this conversation, is taking dual roles on simultaneously?
Well, I, I'm, I'm pretty proud of Maggie. I think she's done everything that I've asked of her to do and more. And, uh, that's a part of that realignment of, uh, workload distribution that we'll be looking at and recommending to council as far as a potential even, uh, new classification for her because of that realignment. Uh, and to essentially, um, uh, have a, a merit, uh, that goes along with the responsibilities that she does have.
Outstanding. That was, uh, more or less the, the base for, uh, my, my, my reason for this topic is to, uh, consider if we need to have a discussion to be able to give, uh, temporary, based on the temporary duties that have been assigned to her from this outgoing city clerk. Do we need to consider compensation increases? I guess based on this conversation, not just for her, if there's anybody else that you would recommend as well too. I just don't want to let that opportunity go because if it's warranted, it should be discussed.
I, I promise I will have something to the full council, uh, next month.
Yep.
And, and, and Jesse, it may even be sooner, um, you know, but I, I, the, the next scheduled council meeting, if the mayor or two council members would, uh, prefer a special session, it could be even sooner.
Yeah, that's my next topic in regards to the 26 budgets, knowing that preliminary levy is gonna need to be determined here very, very soon. I do have a sense of weariness about where we're sitting right now, understanding where the city staff sits with the change. Can you give us an update or a rundown? Actually, that's a topic.
The topic. Yeah. So.
I relinquish.
Okay.
To you.
Council member London.
Yes, uh, I got, uh, similar interests and concerns that Jesse has mentioned here on Maggie. I think she needs to be compensated for what she's doing and her added responsibilities and so forth. And, um, you know, the sooner the better.
I promise the sooner the better. It does take a little time to do a little bit of analysis on that. And, and, and when I say analysis, I don't want to speak for, uh, Ms. Maggie, but, um, it's a participatory process. So, uh, I'm looking at that, but I'm working, uh, through that process with her and we are right in the middle of it. But you have to kind of take things into consideration again, as you all have reiterated, she's quite busy. So, um, we gotta have a little bit of work-life balance there. She's putting in a lot of hours and I gotta be mindful of that. But I will get something to you sooner than later.
And, you know, the other thing is, uh, it may seem like a small thing, but it's probably a big thing. You know, she handles the, the front desk and yet she's got all her other responsibilities out there. If we could, uh, find her a nice little office to do her work, I think it'd be beneficial as well.
That is part of the, uh, part of the assessment there, sir. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Anything else for Keith?
No, Madam Mayor, not for me.
Okay, um, question, because our regular council meeting starts in 10 minutes, but we have budget. The 2026 budget discussion on here, realistically, how much time do you think that will take? Because I see we have all the department heads here as well.
I, I did for your, for, for your special meeting and I, uh, told them to give a high-level, uh, overview. They're pretty sharp individuals. Um, so if you want to give them, uh, two to three minutes each, that's what you're gonna get. If you'd like to pause and have them come back another scheduled special meeting or a work session, which may be more appropriate. I mean, certainly you could do that. It's totally up to the council.
How many?
At, at a minimum, continue this agenda item to the regular agenda for the council.
Yes.
It's gonna start and then you could discuss continuing it from there to a special session or to a workshop or something, if you want to do that.
Okay. I won't, do I need to make a motion or can I just continue it? We need to make a motion. Okay, we'll make a motion to continue the 2026 budget discussion to the regular, into the regular council meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, any other discussion? This one, we'll just do a, a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. There's no names. Um, who should we start with?